of the Haddonfield Board of Education, this is our official voting meeting. We're happy to be broadcasting this meeting live on our YouTube channel and it will be available for replay when the meeting is over immediately. I want a quick thank you to Ryan and Ryan Shoffey and John Miller for setting us up. They are our tech guys who make this all happen. This has become a really good model. I'll remind the public watching that there will be a section, a combined section for public comment in the middle of the meeting before we go through the agenda. Those comments can be on agenda items or non-agenda items. Traditionally, we save non-agenda items for the end of the meeting. But because we're doing it in this digital format, we're just going to have all comments come in on that middle meeting, public comment break. I want to thank everyone for joining us. I mean, I don't think we have, I don't know how many people we have online, but we administrators, staff, board members, thank you for being here under these circumstances. Folks watching at home, thank you for being interested in logging on. District continues to operate from, in a different, you know, obviously different capacity than we have in the past. Clearly going into this, we didn't anticipate, you know, we couldn't plan in one day to do this indefinitely, but we're doing it indefinitely. We're waiting to hear from Governor Murphy for direction on getting back, things back to normal. This week, he did mention that he, you know, he's taking it a step at a time. He has not ruled out a return, but you know, who knows? We'll see what, we'll wait to hear from him. But we, the board hopes everyone is staying safe and healthy at home and doing as best as possible. Big meeting tonight, we have budget, meeting, talk about budget, we have leaders, we have changes, we have disappointments, we have exciting news for some, and we're going to talk about kickbacks and bribes and all kinds of crazy stuff that we've been reading about. We're going to help, help bring some clarity to some questions. And so let's, without further ado, let's dive in. I'm going to ask because I don't, I think the student, student report, we don't, we're skipping that because there's not much going on in the buildings to talk about. On a side note, you know, the kids, especially the pledge in the open.
We need to take role.
I forgot to start the meeting. So the meeting is not now officially open. We've been breaking rules by now. I'm going to call the meeting to order now five minutes late, but we're in. Mike, take role. I apologize for skipping the requirement meeting beginnings.
Mr. Beffer.
Here.
Ms. Crockett.
Here.
Ms. Hoag.
Here.
Ms. Hoagertle.
Here.
Ms. Cutner.
Here.
Ms. Paoli. Mr. Vecchio.
Here.
Vice President Seidel.
Here.
President Sangelo.
Here. You know, can we all rise for the pledge wherever you are? I'm going to get my camera off, but lead us in it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's much better when there's a crowd. Mike, can you read the public notice statement?
Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act has been given by the Superintendent of Schools in the following manner. On January 10th, 2020, notice of this meeting was posted on the interior of the school administration offices, 1 Lincoln Avenue, Haddonfield. Written notice was submitted and filed with the Haddonfield Borough Clerk and notices were faxed to the Courier-Post and mailed to the retrospect newspaper.
Great. So we are skipping through some of the accommodations and student representative reports. We have two presentations to lead us off tonight. We are going to be, are we leading with Dr. Murray? We'll be discussing the online parent survey. Dr. Murray, take it away. Dr. Muslin, if you want to intro at all, it's up to you guys. Okay, go ahead. Colleen, you're, good to go. Thank you. Take the stage and share away.
Thank you. Will do. Do you, do you see my screen okay?
It is coming, it has popped up. Yes, thank you.
Perfect. All right. Thanks so much. It's my pleasure to share with you the results of a parent survey we gave out. We, we submitted it to parents on April 3rd and we closed it on the 9th and we started analyzing it over spring break. So if you think of the timeline, that's less than two weeks that we had been doing the remote learning. We thought really carefully about what we wanted to be on this survey and we wanted to get it out quickly enough that we could mitigate any, you know, real problems and so that we could really learn from things as quickly as possible because it was becoming more clear that it was going to be a longer remote learning experience than we had expected. The response rate on the survey was good. It was, you know, anything between, around 32% is good for an inside survey and an outside survey between 10 and 15% is seen as good. So you can see this response rate is, is good. One of the questions we asked was how long are children spending on their schoolwork? And you can see that the large majority of our students are either spending one to three hours or four to seven hours a day. We wanted to keep it as short as possible and yet hone in on, you know, the key things that we saw as the most important in this, in this experience. And the first was communication. The second was how relevant is the schoolwork? And the third is how well is your child progressing? This shows you the results of all three of those questions across the district. The blue is communication, the orange is relevance, and the gray is progressing. So in fairness, a couple of quest, a couple of parents mentioned that I can't really tell you how my child's progressing because I'm not a teacher. So duly noted, but we thought it was an important question to ask anyway. So this question about communicating assignments to students and parents, these are the results across the district. This is a five-point Likert scale and Likert questions are usually on a five-point scale and it's about how, it's, it's meant to quantify how people feel about something. And so this is how the parents felt about communication. This is parental perceptions of the relevance of assignments that are being given. This is parental perceptions of how well their child is learning or progressing. Now, these are word clouds. We used the qualitative responses. There was a question at the end where parents were able to write in their, their comments, you know, just their free flowing comments. Many, many comments came in and they were incredibly helpful and thoughtful and kind. And so we took that and we put it into this word cloud generator. So the bigger the word, the more often that word is used. This is for the high school. This is a typical quote that this one came in for the high school, but you could find them all across the district. HMHS teachers have been excellent, quickly starting up the online program and offering interesting and well-designed curriculum. This is, these are the three questions just for the high school. This is the word cloud for the middle school. Here's a quote about the middle school. We are grateful to all of you for your commitment and dedication to educating our children during a time that is challenging on so many levels. This, these are the results for the middle school, three questions. This is Central's word cloud. And this is a quote about Central. The Board of Education, the administration, and our educators should be congratulated on the speed in which the online learning curriculum was up and running, the ease of use, and the terrific level of communication. These are the results for Central. These, this is the word cloud for Lizzie. This is a quote from a Lizzie parent. I am impressed with the level of professionalism and the speed in which they were able to put this system in place. These are the results for Lizzie. This is the word cloud for Tatum. A Tatum parent said, I'm impressed by how great this all came together in such a short time. These are the results for Tatum. So the comments are so interesting and I'll tell you, the administrative staff, first off, the administration designed the survey together, reviewed it quite often before we even sent it out. And then once it's, once it went out, we were all eagerly waiting on the edge of our seats because we really wanted to know what the parents thought. So once it was all said and done, we, we thematically grouped the, the responses and these are the themes in order of importance. So in other words, number one is gratitude. That was referenced over and over and over and over again. And I'll tell you, it was energizing and heartwarming, so we really appreciate that. And that's after hundreds of emails and phone calls that came in saying, you know, thank you, we love the, the work you're doing. So, you know, thank you for the thanks. Number two was future hopes and suggestions, some really interesting and thoughtful and insightful entries from the parents. Number three, the third theme was interaction and eagerness for it. Number four was about quality, either good, bad, or just, you know, points about quality. Number five was a sense of balance was questioned. Number six, parent and student stress and worry, and worry about the teachers too. And number seven is the idea of unmanageability. So I'm going to go through each of those one by one. What are parents telling us is what we wanted to know and what might they want us to do with that information and how could we respond to those requests? So that's, I'm going to take those five and I'm going to analyze each one. The big ideas that we learned is that families are under pressure. There's a perceived inconsistency among some parents or inequity. There's an eagerness for more supportive socialization. There's a request for less busy work. In other words, more personalization and relevance to the schoolwork. And lastly, but not least, families are grateful and proud. So number one, families are under pressure. We thought, what, what do they want us to know about that? And we think that they want us to know the experience, the user experience should be easier, the workload should be adjusted, either more difficult or easier, you know, depending on the parent. We got, you know, the, the comments were really all over and that's because, you know, learning needs to be personalized. So what we did was we rearranged the schedules. Now, the elementary school had already taken on rearranging their schedule and, and by the time this survey was out, the middle school and the high school had done so as well. So the, the administration was really on top of all of this, but the survey responses were affirming and we, and we still had a lot to grow from, to use from those responses. So we thought we should reorganize and streamline deliveries. I'll show you an example of what that looks like. That, that was done at every building in a multiple, multitude of ways. We thought calls home are in order. Wellness checks are going on still constantly. So, you know, really trying to stay in touch with the families. And we thought that parents want accommodation for students in crisis and that's been going on as well. Now, we don't know what we don't know, so if, if, if you're in crisis, you should definitely reach out and talk to us about it. So this is an example of how we tried to streamline the experience. These are teachers from the eighth grade. They've shared their schedules to make sure that people aren't bumping on each other's toes, to make sure that there's a consistency across the board. And that can be found in all of the schools. So the second point, there is inconsistency or inequity. So we thought parents want standardization across the schools, across the grades, and across the classes. So we thought, how might they, we respond to those requests? First and foremost, we shared the data with the staff. The staff is incredibly eager to learn and wants to improve and grow and it's happening day by day. We thought we should communicate expectations, you know, in, in lots of different ways to make sure that they're clear. We identified struggling students and we're continuing to work with the, our students, teachers, and we're continuing to work with their, those teachers to give them the kind of support they need to improve this, this learning experience. And we work as schools, we work as grades, and we work as departments to support professional learning in any number of ways. There are, you know, just meetings upon meetings that teachers, some they have to, but some they don't have to and they choose to go to. And so learning is happening in lots and lots of different ways to support this experience. This is one of the examples of how that survey data, this is Shannon Simpkins took this survey data and, you know, made it more palatable so that teachers could, you know, easily read it, read through it and make sense of it. And then she even offered takeaways for consideration. So this is a really great way to use that parent survey data to share and learn together. So the third point, not enough FaceTime and/or socialization. So this was, this has been getting better and better. We thought parents want us to facilitate face-to-face interaction a little bit more regularly. So we thought by responding, we would communicate expectations for regular face-to-face interactions, which are ongoing and consistent now. We thought we could support teacher learning lots of different ways. Again, we have office hours for teachers, we have lots of meetups with teachers to try to help them, you know, make sure that they feel comfortable with this new experience. We share model work between teachers and between schools even, and we encourage collaboration. So number four, tasks are sometimes perceived as busy work. That term busy work came up quite, quite, quite a lot enough. Sometimes in terms of telling us that it's not busy work, so just to be clear. But we thought parents are asking for personalized learning and improved relevance and rigor of work. And so we thought to respond, we would try to encourage focusing on assessment data to personalize data, to personalize learning. Everyone knows that the best teachers know that formative assessment is where it's at when you want to personalize learning, you have to really know the student at a granular level. And so teachers are focusing on that as well as summative data for the end of the year. We also encourage collaboration among teams and among grades to share best practices. So this is an example of how that personalization is happening. This is just Tatum. Over the last couple of weeks, 435 phone calls have gone out just from Tatum administration in the last few weeks. And that's in an attempt to personalize learning. What's going on at home? How is everything going? What can we do to make it better? And this is consistent across the board. All five schools are doing this kind of outreach. Number five, families are grateful and proud. And I can't stress this enough. This was the overwhelming dominant theme. And we thought, what might they want us to know? What are they asking us to do? And we think they were asking us to be protective of the social emotional well-being of our teachers and staff. People explicitly said, we know these teachers are, are under a lot of pressure. Some of them have, you know, situations like ours where, you know, maybe a family member is losing a job, maybe there's multiple kids at home, you know, what have you. We felt families are trying to be very protective of our teachers and that's a beautiful thing. But we also think parents are wanting us to keep up the great work and the, the momentum that we have. So we thought, how might we respond to those requests? With regular phone, phone calls, check-ins, we do, the schools are doing approximately 30 a week per school to teachers and we're doing class visits to make teachers feel supported, optional office hours at every level to show support. Parent and community communications are being sent out to highlight the great work that the teachers and staff are doing. Social media is being leveraged. So this is just to show you how often those wonderful words were used in the comment section. Love, amazed, appreciate, community, lucky, care, kudos, happy, best, fantastic, commitment, dedication, great job, great work, good work, impressed, grateful, and thank you. So this quote says, while I now have a much larger appreciation for all of your work than ever before, I'm ever pleased with my tax dollars here in Haddonfield. Simply wonderful job from the top down. However, if those last two slides do not reflect your experience, we want you to reach out for help. We all genuinely want you to feel fully supported. That is all for my presentation. Thank you.
Colleen, that was fantastic. The, it was a lot of information. Colleen's dense in a good way. She packs it in and it was fast. So luckily this is recorded, so if you're at home and you're, and you want to go through that again, you'll be able to. That was really great, very detailed presentation. Any board members or anyone have questions for, for Colleen about the presentation? Okay, all right. Thanks for doing that. Next up, we have a presentation from our business administrator, assistant business administrator, Mike Catalano. Mike's going to go through the budget. Very important presentation, so we'll ask you to queue up and walk us through the 2020, 21 budget.
All right. Sharing my screen for the first time. That's thrilling. Okay. Can everyone can see that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, all right, this is the public hearing budget presentation for the board for the 2021 school year. So this is what we'll get through tonight. Like I, I explained to the board, I didn't really touch on taxes at all. Last board meeting, tonight is, that's going to be most of this meeting. So we're going to dive into the tax levy, tax rate. And what I'll do is I'll recap some budget accomplishments, basically a recap of last, some of the things last meeting we discussed. All right. So this is a, basically the breakdown of the total operating revenue. The, the bottom number in the 2020, 2021 proposed column, that's what our total operating general fund budget will be. If you notice, so the, the tax levy, which I'll dive into more detail in later slides, it's 2% change and that's all we can do. You also notice the, the current increase in state aid on the fifth slide down, or sorry, fifth, fifth row down. All right. The $2.8 million in the proposed column. That's our withdrawal from capital reserve. That'll fund our AHU addition at the high school in the C-Wing and cameras. All right. So this is a, this is a breakdown of the, of the tax levy for the proposed year and the prior two years. I, I noticed in prior years, the board might not have been presented the, those top two rows before where it says local tax levy. So I just wanted to show, you know, the 2% increase. And then there's a sort of a strong message in this slide. So under the proposal column, you'll see zeros there for enrollment adjustment, healthcare adjustment, and bank cap. That's because we can't utilize any of those adjustments. Enrollment adjustment, we're not eligible for, we're not eligible for healthcare adjustment and we exhausted all of our bank cap in the current year's budget. So we can't use any of that to go over the 2% tax levy cap. So you'll see the 2% increase is 734, 747,000. Okay. This is a breakdown of the rate in comparison to last year. See the increase in general fund, the debt service fund? That's, that's something we can't control. That's, it's paying off our debt. Okay. So I, what I wanted to do was sort of paint a picture for the taxpayers. The easiest way to do it is basically in comparison to the total tax rate from last year compared to this year and what the annual increases. So for example, if they assessed home value of 300,000 in Haddonfield, we'd be taxed at the proposed rate of, that's given there under the fiscal year 2021. The total increase for the year would be $37, applicable to the school tax rate, total school tax rate. And you'll see how, you know, breaks down monthly $3. Okay. And just, just so you know, as far as the total tax rate for the town of Haddonfield, last year, last calendar year, it made up of 56% of the total tax rate in Haddonfield. So I mean, I could guess it's probably going to be similar to that percentage of the total tax rate of assessed values. Okay. And we started doing this last year. This is a sort of little graphic to basically break down where tax dollars go as far as the different aspects of the district. This did not change much. You could, you could guess that each category might have shifted a penny or two. General Ed was 40, you know, in terms of the breakdown of this, this graphic, it was 45 cents there last year compared to next year. It's going to be 46 cents. Not much of a difference, but still says a strong message as far as what goes where. And the bottom there is basically the, the details of what makes up each aspect of the district. Okay. So I just wanted to recap. We went over this in our last budget presentation. We're, we're definitely accomplishing a lot, some additions, some staffing, you know, enrollment projections changed weekly, but we're prepared to, to fund whatever situation comes our way. We have two new positions in, one in maintenance and one in IT we're going to fund. We're expanding the one-on-one initiative. I believe we're expanding to two more additional grades. Capital improvements, that comes out of our capital reserve funds. You see, that's the high school C-Wing addition. Now, we wanted to dive into one specific asset that we believe that we've come a long way in, you know, budgeting for and contributing funds to previously, currently, and in the future. So we wanted to break down security in a way where what's existing, what's in progress, and what do we have coming in the future? So we still have the high school, school resource officer and the visitor management system that comes with a annual price. We're still maintaining funding that. In progress, we have the interior door window covers. That's actually almost done completely district-wide. The vestibules, that's still underway. That construction is going to start before June 30. We also have the social emotional learning roller program through Yale University. We devoted some funds to that this year. We're going to continue doing that next year. New things next year, we're going to have the, the district's student assistance coordinator that's budgeted for. And then the last two items, they're actually on your agenda tonight as well. The digital floor mapping system, what that is, that, that ties into a county-wide system to allow law enforcement county-wide to gain access to building floor plans digitally. That was a recommendation out of security committee. And then also we're funding cameras for next year. All right. Any questions?
Nice work, Mike. Anybody?
So make, I, I want to circle back to the slide on tuition decreases and state aid increases, just for a minute if you could, Mike.
Sure.
Right. So I, I want to highlight because percentages and, and real dollars aren't really the same. So in, in a net standpoint, although we've gotten increased state aid, not all of that is general education. So if you saw on the dollar slide, special ed was 20 cents before and now it's 21 cents of, of every dollar that's spent. But in that same vein, we're losing tuition rate. And, and that tuition rate slide isn't a year-over type of slide. It is a four to seven-year slide, depending on when the student enters our district and drops out of our district. And, and, and this is another year of declining tuition, down all the way to $200,000 this year. Next year, I think it's estimated to be even lower still because there really aren't that many students filling in the grade behind them. So the current eighth grade, I don't think has any. So as they move in with zero and 12th grade drops out, that's going to continue in its downward trajectory. So I just wanted to point that out, that although we had an increase in state aid, some of it is restricted to the special education side of the, of the tally. And then we do have a substantial loss in revenue on the tuition side that goes into things like the next slide, which, you know, some of the security improvements that we saw and are going to continue to see as well as, as other non-educational, but just as important to the district and its parents to be funded. So I just wanted to point that out.
I have a question about this state aid. Is that our proposed state aid that could likely change as a result of COVID?
It, it could. Yes, but it's, that's a number that I, I'm not allowed to change yet. According to, according to zero guidance. So it has, it has to.
I just wanted to curious if it was a given or if that was, that was the one. Because he was talking about that in one of his updates, so Murphy was.
Yeah. I mean, it's worth, it's worth just bringing up here. I mean, the, the situation we're in, from, in terms of the way the state is spending and the fear of the state making changes. We actually have made some good strides in the last couple of years in our funding in terms of getting, moving closer to what the, what, what our formula dictated that we should be getting. So we've always been underfunded for, by the, in comparison to the formula that gives, that gives our funding amount. So we, we had a few years of good strides with state funding and. Uh, so we, we had a few years of good strides with state funding and, um, you know, it's, it's just, you know, we, we have to be very mindful of, of what's happening at the state. The state delayed their fiscal year end, so we're getting, we're putting our numbers to the state. The state collects our budgets and, um, uh, we don't, we won't know their final number until well after we've, our, our budget has been finalized. So it previously had been that our budgets were finalized at the same time. So, uh, the, um, you know, it's just, it's just a risk. It's something to be mindful of as we, you know, look to the intermediate and long-term future.
And, and I think that going back to that slide for a minute, I think the scary thing for me is if you look back historically, you know, when, when we had a bit of a recession, um, what happened to the state aid then? And there's a very, very, very big difference than where we are right now. So it is a bit worrisome.
Okay. Mike, thanks. Any other questions?
Uh, Adam and Mike, this is all on our website or will be on our website tomorrow. Colleen's presentation, I believe, is already there. I don't see mics there, but it will be tomorrow.
It'll be there first tomorrow, along with the user-friendly budget, which we statutorily have to post to our website.
Mike, thank you. Great.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. Next, we did a lot of, uh, board committee reports, um, last month, or I'm sorry, last week. Were there any updates? I think, um, Lynn, did you have just something you wanted to mention? Or I don't mean to put you on the spot, there was something.
Lynn, just to jump, cause you jumped me. Uh, we just have our next curriculum meeting is May 6th. So, you know, if just anybody keeping score, that, that's our next meeting is next Wednesday.
Great. I didn't mean to bypass you, Dave. I just know you gave the update last week.
No, no sweat, no sweat.
Did, uh, Susan, do you have anything?
Nope, did it last week.
Okay, Lynn, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so I have a bunch, actually. You'll see today we have 13 policies on the agenda for a second reading. 10 of those were mandated or recommended by Strauss as may. One of them actually, policy 7243, we'll have to table and talk about in our next, uh, policy committee meeting. There's some optional language that we did not discuss. Um, one expressly allows homework during the summer. Um, one allows us to hold our board meetings virtually under emergency situations such as now. And then the policy 7510, the use of school facilities policy is on for a second reading. I also, this Tuesday, just a couple of days ago, we had our grading system project team meeting. We met virtually to discuss whether we should retain our seven-point grading scale or move to a 10-point grading scale. We have not yet convened as a policy committee to discuss the research findings. We'll do that on May 12th. But I wanted to just give some highlights of that, the research that was shared on Tuesday for everyone's benefit. There were 20 or so people who participated in the meeting. There were some team members who either couldn't attend or they couldn't see the slides. So I know Larry has sent them a recording of the meeting and the slides so that they can take a look and share their feedback with us. And also I think, um, Chuck has put the ball on the, our website under the news section. So I encourage all of you and any interested community members to take a look. There's some great research on there. So we discussed, I'm going to try to do, do this quickly, six, um, research questions. The first was whether our current seven-point scale has an impact on our students as prospective college applicants. And Jeff Holman, our high school counselor emailed 50 colleges that our students are generally interested in applying to. 38 of those schools responded, 22 of which stated that a switch to a 10-point grading scale would be helpful to our students. Um, there could potentially be more acceptances and also more merit scholarships. None of the schools thought that our current grading scale was helping students. 16 schools said it didn't matter either way. Mr. Holman also discussed whether our current seven-point scale has an impact on prospective scholarship athletes through the NCAA clearinghouse. And the feedback shared was that most of our athletes will easily meet eligibility requirements, but that the switch to a 10-point scale could help those marginal students, those who's 80 to an 84 in a class right now is counted as a C, but with a switch to a 10-point scale would be counted as a B, and that could help with their eligibility. We had, third, we had some current students who reached out to classmates to assess whether moving to a 10-point grading scale would impact their stress levels. And we heard from two, uh, current high school students. One shared that her, her peers believed that moving to a 10-point scale would positively impact confidence and self-esteem. The other shared that the classmates he spoke to thought moving to a 10-point system would make Haddonfield less elite and prestigious. Although he added that he thought his classmates would likely change their minds if they were aware that a switch to a 10-point scale could positively impact college acceptances and scholarships. Jamie and I researched whether a seven-point or a 10-point scale is indicative of a stronger, more elite academic school. And to do that, we looked at three different categories of schools. We researched J districts in New Jersey, which are those districts with high socioeconomic characteristics similar to Haddonfield. 17 of the 18 high schools use a 10-point scale. Only one, Haddonfield, uses a seven-point scale. We looked at the top 25 high schools according to US News and World Report across the country. 18 of them use a 10-point system. One used a seven-point system and six, we either couldn't confirm or they used a different process altogether. And finally, we looked at the 12 schools in the Colonial Conference, um, which is the athletic conference we're part of. Three schools use a 10-point grading system, five use a seven-point grading system, and four use an eight-point grading system. So we are much more aligned with our neighbors in the Colonial Conference. Then we had middle school and high school teachers surveyed their colleagues to determine whether a switch to a 10-point system would impact teacher work or teacher grading. Middle school teachers heard from 25 teachers from a cross-section of all grades and subjects. 92% thought the change would not impact their work. One person thought the impact would be positive and one thought it would be negative. 10 teachers were strongly in support of the change and two to three teachers were concerned about a potential loss of rigor. The high school response was a bit less clear. There were, um, again, 25 teachers who responded. 52% of the teachers saw either no problem or a positive impact with the change. 20% of the teachers were adamantly against, against the change because they were concerned about a loss of rigor and motivation. And 28% were unclear or felt there was no real reason for the change. And finally, um, Colleen Murray reached out to the middle school and high school teachers to assess whether the switch to a 10-point scale would impact our assessment systems. She had a 13% response rate from the middle school and 27% response rate from the high school. And 54.8% said there would be no impact and 45.2% said there would be an impact on their assessments. And when teachers were asked whether they thought grade inflation exists today, 58.1% said yes and 41.9% said no. The response was mixed as to whether the switch to a new, um, 10-point scale would change that. So I quickly summarized everybody. So I, again, I encourage everybody to look at their, the slides. And if you want to watch a recording of the meeting, and those are on the website under the news section. Any questions?
Thank you, Lynn. That was, uh, it was a cool, a very cool meeting to see, um, some of the, it was, you know, these meetings, as I mentioned it at, at the actual, uh, grading meeting. To watch the process unfold and to see people, uh, the students were fascinating. They, they questioned their, the student body as to what they thought it was going to mean to change to another system. And, um, you know, the, the, the students believed one thing and, and the student representative, I don't think I can use, use their names because they're minors, I'm not sure. He, he said, oh wow, you know, his reaction was, oh wow. Uh, once they see the data, they're going to really want to rethink the way they answered that question. And that's the reasons we're going through these processes. And I mentioned in the meeting, it's what the board does all the time. We get our data and we get our information from our administrators, our, our professionals who, um, are, are aware of what's happening, um, in, in education. So, um, uh, my two cents was it was, it was fascinating to see other people, uh, be part of the process, especially the students. Any other? Okay, we'll move on. Tom, do you have a, want to give a quick, uh, negotiations update?
Sure, uh, not much to update. Um, we're continuing to have discussions and I, I know I mentioned it last week, but, um, probably have a few more people from the public on tonight. So I just again, wanted to, uh, publicly thank the administration, the negotiations committee and the HEA. Sean and Rachel have, uh, been very, um, accommodating in continuing to have the meetings virtually and as well as all the HEA reps. So I wanted to thank them and, um, again, just continuing to have our discussions and we have another meeting set up for next week.
Great. Thanks, Tom. Uh, no exact session on negotiations tonight, uh, nothing. Is that correct, Tom?
Yeah, nothing tonight, um, uh, but, um, definitely next, uh, work session.
Okay. Craig, Assistant Superintendent Klaus, do you have, uh, anything for us this evening?
I do, just very quickly, um, tonight is, uh, one of, you'll notice the personnel, you'll be renewing staff and, and all staff for next year. Included in that are, um, our non-tenure teachers. There's, there were 66 currently non-tenure teachers. Uh, 13 of those teachers will be, uh, getting tenure when they come back in September. And what I, what I plan to do is it's spread out. It's, it's four high school, three middle, five elementary and one district-wide employee. They're all teachers. The, the work session in May, I'm going to have a presentation put together of, of how you acquire tenure. Um, I think many people think it's just you're here, you, you do time and you get tenure. Not the case at all. It's highly regulated, a lot of evaluation, time and effort goes into it. Um, so I'm, I'm going to take you through step by step over what a teacher certificate is, what mentorship is, what tenure process is, how we evaluate, what tools we use, all the standard measures that go into it. So we get a really deep understanding for both, uh, teachers and for administrators about what a tenure, tenure procedure process looks like. Also talking to some people, I mean, getting tenure, it's, 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 it's a big deal. It's, it's an honor. It's a lot of hard work and dedication and focus goes into that. So when, you know, a, a thought for the future, uh, when September rolls around and these people have their fourth year ended day, which is you get vet tenure, your fourth year ended day. Acknowledging these, these, these folks for their hard work and dedication for the last four years. Uh, many of them are going to be with us for a long time after that. Uh, so it, it would be a nice gesture, I believe, if we look at September about ways we can really take our hats and tap our, tip our hats to these folks. So that's it for me for tonight.
All right. Any questions for Chuck? All right, we'll look forward to that presentation in May. And then we had also, uh, yeah, talked about celebrating the, uh, the tenure, the staff next, uh, next fall. Dr. Muslin?
Yeah, so President Sangiello, just of course, at this, uh, juncture, uh, in, in online learning, the, the thank you, uh, to our faculty and our principals, uh, our, our admin team, our, our aides, our, uh, secretaries, our, our administrative assistants. I mean, everyone is doing, uh, a, a job out there and, uh, they're, they're, they're doing a good job to support this. There's a lot of variability in online learning, which unfortunately, there's a lot of variability in teaching. From, uh, let's say third grade at Tatum to third grade at Lizzie to third grade at Central. You just don't see it as much. You, you, it really is, uh, it really is pronounced, uh, now. Uh, people are learning, uh, online modes and they're doing a great job with it. Uh, and some people are spinning plates with online modes. So, uh, we knew we could sustain this, um, model for a short time. But, uh, as we're moving now into the second, uh, month and, and beyond, uh, this is taxing on our, our staff. It, it's taxing on parents, taxing for children or, or no one can get out of the house. Uh, the longer this goes on, uh, the, the harder this all gets. So, uh, you know, we, we've got to have patience and we're working with our staff. Our principals are, staff's working with each other. They're learning. Uh, we are not an online school, but, uh, we're, we're, we're doing a good job. So obviously thank you to everybody, including our parents, by the way, out there. We have a huge thank you. They're juggling, uh, work, working at home and, uh, working and teaching and very difficult ask and a very difficult lift, but, uh, nothing, uh, nothing we could do. About getting back to school, President Sangiello, we have no idea. Uh, I'm reading a lot of reports that are, are saying to go back. I, I am very concerned as a longtime 40-year school leader, I'm very concerned about going back. In this environment without, uh, a vaccine, without a cure, uh, without a treatment or, you know, possibility of treatments wherever we are. So we'll see. Uh, we, we again, have no idea. Uh, I wish I could provide any, any information. So more thank yous than anything and, uh, let, let's, let's keep, keep swimming, keep swimming, uh, keep swimming.
Yeah, one, one of the things you had mentioned earlier, Dr. Muslin, is, um, you know, some of the policies that would have to be changed in order for us to go back to school. What happens if a sibling, uh, comes down with, uh, with the virus? What happens if a parent or a teacher or a teacher's spouse? What are the rules? What are we allowed to do? What are we supposed to do? You know, those, those have to be worked out for everyone prior to initiating school. And they're real, they're legal-based, uh, deep, uh, difficult questions to answer that we're going to, we're going to require guidance from, from state officials, correct?
Yeah, we, we have, we have absolutely no guidance whatsoever from the Commissioner of Education, from the Governor's Office anywhere about reopening. So, uh, anybody out there thinking that, uh, you know, we're going to reopen on the, uh, what, what did the governor say, the 15th, might, might, he'll let us know. You know, by, by reopening on the, uh, 18th, uh, I, I just can't see it. I mean, he's got to give us a runway. We've got, uh, we've got a lot of, uh, a, a lot of things that, that we've got to work through. Spacing, social distancing. You, you're right, uh, you know, young, the, the, the research, uh, uh, that's out there tells us that, you know, children aren't typically affected by this, so okay. But, uh, if they have it and give it to, uh, an adult, a teacher, an aide, someone in, in, in the class that, that is around my age, uh, 50, 60s, um, these are all chances.
Lot of questions, lot of questions.
That, uh, that, that state leaders are going to take, uh, what, 37 states have canceled school and for some reason, New Jersey is, uh, is waiting on that. We'll, we'll see, President Sangiello, we'll see.
Well, I know, I know there are a lot of, you know, the seniors and the families. It's, it's just, it's this time of year is a celebration, not just for the kids, but, uh, the parents, you know? You, you get these kids ready to fly and, uh, there's a lot of, uh, pomp and circumstance around, uh, around celebrating that. And it's so sad to, uh, that it's just different this year. The kids are more, I feel like the kids are more resilient. I, I know as a parent, you're like, you know, it's harder, but, uh, but, uh, yeah, listen, we'll, we'll, we'll keep you informed and we'll, we'll do our best to, to communicate, but we're, we're watching the state as well. Thanks for your update, uh, Dr. Muslin.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so we have some, uh, some news, uh, to, I'm going to, uh, share my, uh, share my screen here. We have, uh, an announcement. We made it last week, but we're trying to make it a little bit more formal this week. Uh, let me know if I'm presenting, uh, the Haddonfield Public Schools are officially announcing a new superintendent. Uh, and there's some updates even in that news. First, we do want to say, uh, oh, let me see how, first we want to say, oh, I, I didn't give up a secret that people didn't know, but thank you to Larry Muslin. He, we had two great years. We did a lot of work, a ton of work in two years. The board was, uh, we were, uh, you know, sprinting to get things in order because we knew there were, there were places we wanted to go and, uh, visions that, that, that we're going to take the, the school district into the 21st century. And, uh, we picked the right guy to really, uh, crack the whip and get things going. And we appreciate the two years. Larry's eating lobster here. He's going back, uh, you know, he came out of retirement, you know? He can go back to eating lobster in Nantucket, uh, with his family. Uh, thank you for your time and, uh, and, and all of your energy. We are welcoming, uh, Charles, Chuck Klaus to the We are welcoming Charles Chuck Klaus to the district officially as our superintendent. A mild update from what I told you last week is, last week I told you, we selected Mr. Klaus as our acting superintendent for a year because things were kind of crazy with the COVID and the pandemic. And we received notice a little bit on the later side that we were going to have to find a replacement. So the board, in its wisdom early on, said, let's make it acting so we can catch our breath and get comfortable with this for a year. But the cat was out of the bag and Chuck has been working as the assistant superintendent for two years. And between Mr. Klaus and Dr. Mussolini, they started handing things off and the board was very excited about the conversations and the work Chuck has done out of the gate and really looked at his body of work over the last two years. So we've decided to offer Mr. Klaus a three-year contract that will start in June. He will not be the acting superintendent. He will just be the superintendent with a three-year contract. And we're very, very excited to have him on board. And we're excited about the permanency of it. It's befitting his work and it befits the district. This is good for staff. This is good for our direction. Chuck joined the Haddonfield School District in nineteen ninety-four, twenty-six years ago, if I do my math correctly, after teaching in Maple Shade, which is okay too. I say that jokingly and lovingly. He advanced to the English Department facilitator in 2004. He became the high school principal in 2000, assistant, I'm sorry, assistant principal in 2008. And then he did a one-year principalship at Central Elementary and then came back to be the principal of Haddonfield High School in 2011. Many of our graduates and parents are familiar with him in that role. He hired Tammy McHale to work with him and she's the current president. She was the dean of students at the time. They have a great relationship, so it's fantastic to see him work with his team. We brought Chuck into the acting assistant superintendent in June of 2018 when our former assistant superintendent took medical leave. He served under Dr. Mussolini officially as superintendent since May of 2019. So he's deep, his history runs deep in the Haddonfield School District in terms of his leadership positions. In addition to being a teacher and an administrator, Mr. Klaus was the varsity wrestling coach from nineteen ninety-three to 2009. He won numerous accommodations, including the most wins by any coach in school history. And I got to ask you, Chuck, that's for wrestling, correct?
Oh, yes, correct.
Okay, okay.
If Jeff Holman retired today, it would have taken me many decades to catch him.
I read that and I said, that has to be wrestling because I know Mr. Holman has like, so like a...
There's many coaches have more wins than I have.
Yeah, we'd have to spend an hour, but yes, it's true. But for all of your coaching of wrestling, I understand you had no state champions. It took you to coach javelin, girls javelin is where you got them, but...
Correct, very true, yes.
So, but we know you're a good wrestling coach too. You coached in college, I'm sorry, you wrestled in college as well, correct?
I did, yes.
Okay.
Boston University.
Okay. And you were the District Twenty-Eight Coach of the Year four times. He was Assistant Director of the Carl Adams Summer Wrestling Camp for twenty-seven years. For six years, Chuck served on the Executive Committee of the NJSIAA, which is the New Jersey Interscholastic Athletic Association. And he was president for the 2017-18 school year. Mr. Klaus was inducted into the South Jersey Wrestling Hall of Fame back in 2011. So he has, you know, done a lot of good here. Some less formal things about Mr. Klaus that we will share. I asked him to share a few things. You may, if you don't recognize him as principal of the high school, Mr. Klaus walks to school almost every day. So you sort of, you see him walking back and forth through town. He raised his children in Haddonfield, three of them, right, Chuck?
Correct, yes.
Yes. He was famous for being always on about a dozen senior trips. You know, I get funny stories. The Bulldog Bulletin was the high school newsletter, newspaper, correct? And there was controversy around the bulletin for a while and they wanted to rename it. So Chuck jokingly named it The Chuck. So it would just be The Chuck Newsletter, News Magazine, and it stuck for one issue. And there's rumors that there's a version out there that we'll have to find and put in your office. He taught his first, he taught his sister-in-law and his niece. So that was his first intergenerational combination, which is significant happening in education when you teach a parent and their child. And he was, he came to the district by Joe Sorico. Joe is a former superintendent and wonderful man who still helps all the time with, in the district of many of our endeavors. And Mr. Klaus told Joe Sorico that he was starting in Morristown and he was going to be approved in the following week. And before that could happen, Joe Sorico had approved Mr. Klaus as a teacher. So we, he was, we, you know, pulled him from Morristown and now we can't get rid of him. So this is, this is good news. Little bit of history about the district, you know, we're the Bulldogs, but we're also traditionally the Haddens. Chuck, or Mr. Klaus is more of a Haddens guy. So the district likes to take on challenging changes. And, you know, he teased me when he said, maybe we should change our mascot. And I said, Chuck, we're doing enough, enough change. We don't have to change the mascot. I know you're a Haddon guy. We'll just keep it the way it is for now, Chuck.
H-A-D-D-O-N-S. We're the Haddens. We're the best. There it is.
So anyway, Chuck, welcome aboard. And, you know, your dedication to the district personally, you know, is evident in your body of work for twenty-six years. And we couldn't be happier to welcome you in this position. You know, we've been working, we've been working on putting the board in a good direction in the last couple of years. And Chuck shares the vision with, he has a great relationship with his team, the administrators, and he's so highly of the staff. So it's just, it's going to be an excellent, an excellent time here. And I'm happy to be a small part of it, but the board really congratulates you if anybody else wants to. Dr. Mussolini, if you want to say anything?
Yes, yeah, yeah. You know, Adam, I think this is an excellent, superb move by the Board of Education. Chuck, I've worked with him, sat next to him, been in foxholes with him, longstanding member of the Haddonfield Borough Community, but also a longstanding member of the Haddonfield School District community. He deserved this. He spent his career in Haddonfield. You could see, I can see, he bleeds red and black. Adam and members of the board and members of the public listening, my prediction is that Chuck will become one of your cultural hero, one of your cultural icon, school leaders. Bill Reynolds, you mentioned Joe Sorico as a beloved principal. And Chuck Klaus will be right next to all of those names, Adam. I can see it. I know it's going to happen. I can't tell you how happy I am to see Chuck, an internal guy, take the head of his district. Beautiful move. Thank you. Good luck, Chuck.
Thank you, Larry.
All right, Chuck, now you're, you could prepare. Last week we were a little loose-footed. Give us your thoughts.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the kind words to Adam and Larry. So I am honored. I'm humbled, but mostly I'm thrilled by this. As I mentioned, most of my adult life, I've been a member of the Haddonfield School District. And it really has molded who I am and how I approach life and how I do a lot of things. And I've always looked to give back to that. I've always looked to make sure I return to Haddonfield what Haddonfield's given to me. And this is another opportunity to continue to return the good turn that Haddonfield's given to me. I've lived and learned in this community. I joke about being a Haddon, you know, what is a Haddon? Someone who was born and raised in Haddonfield. And I go back to Jaws and you said there's a great scene in Jaws where they're on the beach and the woman wants to be an islander. And I said, you can't be an islander. You weren't born here. I'm hoping that twenty, if I get to thirty years of superintendency, maybe I could become a Haddon, at least honorary in title. I'll never really truly be a Haddon.
No, no, Chuck, but go on, go on. Keep trying.
But by living and learning here, I think I know the key part of the success of the school district. And it really is the working and the combination of the district, the teachers and the staff, the parents, and the kids. And because they all have the same goal and the same vision and work together, that's the key to all of this. If one of those three components is missing, you can work as hard as you want and do all these great things, but it doesn't quite get it. It's the fact that Haddonfield has that great relationship between those three components that make it the special place it is. And I want to continue to build on those things. I want to be a leader who develops a vision and gives progressive meaning and change. I think we see things now as we talk about, we're moving in a direction now that maybe not, wasn't the same way we were on a couple of years ago, but it's a good direction, a really good one. I want to continue doing that and continuing to steer the ship, you know, the ocean liner ship. You've got to keep steering things forward. And at the same time, honoring who we are, honoring where we came from. And one of the key points to that I want to make is remembering and honoring who we are doesn't mean we stay stagnant, we are frozen in amber. Honoring who we are is more than that. We're a group of people in this school district, staff, teachers, administrators, who improve every single day or work to improve every single day. And they do that by looking at who they are, looking at what they've done, reflecting on it, modifying it, changing it, and moving forward. I see it in the classrooms every single day. I see when you give teachers feedback, they change. It's the fabric of who we are. You see it beyond the school day. You see in middle of June, Mr. DiDonato in an unair-conditioned room with forty-five kids learning how to tap dance because they're going to change what they are and improve. You see with your coaches, you see with all those things. The fabric of who we are is a group of high expectations who want to modify where they are and change for the better. And so as I talk about meaningful and progressive change and honoring who they are, it may sound like there's a conflict there, but it's really not. It really gets to the essence, the DNA of who the Haddonfield staff are. And so once again, I'm just going to finish with this. If we spend enough time talking about me tonight, I don't like being talked about. I am honored to be part of this work. I'm honored to have this leadership role. And I really look forward to continuing to grow as an individual myself and help grow the Haddonfield School District and community. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, Chuck. Very exciting.
I wish we could applaud online here.
That's good. Tracy Matozo, just, I'm going to read it. As Tracy Matozo is the president of the, as president of the Haddonfield Association of Supervisors Principal Association, we congratulate Chuck and know that his continued leadership, sense of community, and understanding that what is best for the children will frame our work into the future. We look forward to the collaboration, we look forward to our collaboration and our work together for the benefit of our children and we share the same pride for this district and community. Thank you, Tracy, for that. And, yeah, this is, it is a time to celebrate, you know?
Thank you, Tracy.
Excellent stuff. Okay, so we'll move on. Let's see, I have a couple, I have a report, an update before we get into public comments. You know, let me, let me select my presentation here. I just, before I do, I want to say a little bit about, you know, the style and the flow of these meetings. I mean, I'm going to talk about what a board member is, what the administration does, how we do our work. I continue to repeat these stories for the good reason that it's important to, you know, it's important to repeat. Some people, when they watch a board meeting, it's the first board meeting they've watched in three years and they don't necessarily, are not necessarily familiar with the flow and how things work. So I'm going to just speak to that a little bit. Sorry about the delay while I queue up the slide. Okay. So let me know if I'm sharing. So Winston Churchill said, "To improve is to change. To be perfect is to change often." Chuck mentioned change. We've been, as a board, making a lot of changes. The most important part of change is not to be feared, but it should be communicated. And we're trying to do our best. We put things in newsletters. We try to discuss things in advance. We're not, we don't have a PR department. We don't have a deep bench of people trying to sculpt messages. All we can do is let people know what we're doing and why we're doing it. And that's what your board as elected officials does. So we, we're making a big change in terms of our childcare services in Haddonfield over the next, for the future. And we've gotten a few questions. And whether it's appropriate or not, we read, you know, I've read every Facebook post and some of it, it's people, it's people really, the good part and the vast bulk of it is people wanting information and that's what we want to offer. Some of it is hard to read when people say, oh, this is disgusting and this is, you know, I hear those words and I think of things that actually are horrific. And I think, boy, this doesn't feel like one of them. But I do understand and it's hard. We try to have fun in our work and we try to keep a light spirit in our presentations. But we also have to remember that it's meaningful and it has an impact on people's lives and has an impact on jobs. And so it's, we don't take our decisions lightly, but we do want to tell you how we approach them. So the childcare decision, I want to walk you through it. Mr. Klaus walked you through it last week. I stole some slides from Mr. Klaus. I want to give some people a little bit more background, a little bit more information. So why are we doing this? People ask this question. Why are you looking at Haddonfield Childcare? Why are you, why did you put out an RFP? Why would you challenge them? Why would you, why would you look and see what else is out there in the world? And I'll take it back a couple of years. We've talked about a lot how we have, we had trouble passing our quality assurance programming, our CUSAC tests with the state. New Jersey's CUSAC Quality Assurance Program is a model for the nation. If you're doing those things well, you're doing, you're operating, you're managing your district properly. We hadn't been. So we had to, we had to do some things differently. One of the things that we were reminded to do as a part of the CUSAC was to go out for bids, rebid contracts. It's state rule that you can't just let a contract hang out indefinitely. You have to rebid your contracts. You have to see what's out there. It's good practice. State mandated practice. State mandate does not fall on Haddonfield Childcare for this. Let's be clear. We were asked as a board, geez, you know, we're rebidding all of these contracts. Should we look at what is happening in Haddonfield Childcare? And we said, as a board, yes. It's not going to be bad practice to do that. We're going to see what is available out in the marketplace for this before and after care. The, we, to be, we wanted to be proactive in our communication. So we communicated that with the Haddonfield Childcare before, during, and after. We've been in deep conversation with them. We communicated this, that we were going to be doing this RFP in our February fourteenth newsletter and in various board meetings. We had to approve moving forward with the RFP. We did that in January. So we approved that we would do an RFP. We communicated that we would do an RFP with the community. We communicated it individually with Haddonfield Childcare. We discussed it at many board meetings. And which brings me to like, so what, we're still talking about it. You know, this has been going on for a while. We want people to understand. We want people who want information, who understand the processes, to understand how this came to be. How did we do it? How do you, how do you evaluate childcare? How do you, you know, what do I, my name is on here. I'm a board member, Jamie Crockett, Justin Brentford. We sat on this committee, but we sat in as elected officials who have children, not that all board members have to have children, but who have children in the district. Some of us have used, on the board, have used the childcare. And we sit in to oversee, we're a governing body. We sat in the presentations and we oversaw the information presented to us from the various providers. Our role as board members is to represent our students first, our parents or families and our community as a whole. But the board members are not educators. We, you know, we can be. Jamie is a teacher. But we rely on the expertise of the entire administration and we should value that expertise. We pay a lot of money for that education and for that, their abilities. So the, when we come to convene these meetings, we bring the administration together and we say, you know, one, how are we doing? Two, what is the feedback? The principal? Your, your, you, the principals of the schools are boots on the ground, frontline parent feedback. We hear from, from, uh, parents on occasion. Principals and teachers hear from parents constantly. So they are the key, uh, resource that we use to get feedback in the community, in the building level community from our parents. And they know what's best for our children because that's their business. That's their livelihood. They understand how practices and strata, and, and, uh, systems affect a child's outcome and affect, affect the child's happiness and progress. That's their job. That's what they do. So we rely on them to really understand the nuances of the information that we're receiving as a board. But this community, this group received the information. We looked at the, at all of the options, the current provider and the providers that, uh, that, uh, that were, were coming in to, to, to bid for the business. Uh, this is from, directly from Mr. Klaus's presentation. RFP was posted on February twenty-eighth. Seven companies submitted the proposals. On March eleventh, the companies came to the district. We spent four plus hours, might've been five, over five hours, listening and deliberating. And we're going to share some of that information with you as to who we heard from, what we heard, what is the value of what they said, what, what, what do their materials look like? Um, and that's what we did. We set a scoring criteria. The scoring criteria were seventy-five percent of the, would, of the criteria would be based on the back and forth. The interview score, which would be how they discuss supervision, staffing, training, their programs, their academic support, the enrichment, the physical, uh, aspects of what they'll offer, their communication and their program implementation. Uh, the twenty-five percent of the score was the qualifications of the staff, their experiences and references, their ability to perform their services and the cost, uh, as, as well as the quality of the, of the submissions. We ranked those. We graded each of those, uh, each of the off, uh, proposals on these bases. Uh, and the, the pool is narrowed down to two finals. But sometimes, uh, and to be honest, we didn't, uh, very frank, we did not necessarily want to share everything. And, and maybe that's right or maybe that's wrong because it, you know, it just, it is, it sort of, it is what it is. We want to move forward in a positive direction. But tonight we're going to share some more details so that you understand how that process took place. It's not meant to be negative in any way, but it's just where we are. Uh, so, um, in addition, the site, the site visits were, had to be canceled because of the pandemic, but the, uh, but we did a lot of phone references and I'll get back to that. So the considerations for the process, did we give points? Was there some sort of hardwired, uh, benefit to being Haddonfield Childcare or, or our current provider? A homegrown, uh, uh, provider? No, no, we didn't. We wanted to go into this sort of with an open mind to provide our students with the best. However, the Board of Education was pulling for HGC more than anyone for the single reason that we don't want to be here having this conversation. This is, um, this is not fun. We, we respect the, the, the long history and great work that Haddonfield Childcare has done. Uh, and you can call that, uh, you know, uh, grandstanding or, 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 or not, you know. You can't discount the comment just because that's not going to be a part of the future. They've made a big difference for many families, uh, in the, in the district. And, and you can still change and have a heartfelt gratitude for the work that they did. Um, but I will say, we were pulling for Haddonfield Childcare. Uh, could we have done the problem? One of the things I asked myself and I've talked to board members, could we have done this in the blind? Could you have interviewed people, but they didn't tell you where they were from? Could you have asked them for materials without names on it? You could. Is it, is it valuable or not? I, I don't know. And I'll sort of get to that a little bit later on. And, and, uh, and then I also want to flip the question. What if we hadn't had childcare? What would we do? How would we have approached the problem? So we'll, we'll get to that a little bit, uh, uh, through. And I apologize for the length of this, but, um, and I, and I'll tell you why it's, it's long and, and, uh, I just think it's our job to, to explain these things. This is also from Mr. Klaus's presentation. This has already been on the website. This is, uh, you know, the, uh, the costs to the parents, the jet, the revenue generated by the, uh, the, um, company or the, the group that's providing the service, the years of experience, the staffing ratio, which we'll also talk about in detail, and then some of the program overviews. So, uh, how they score, this is how they scored in, in, in their interview. And I, I left the names of who scored what. Frankly, we, it doesn't matter. We didn't know who scored. We just put it in a, uh, in a spreadsheet and we, and we had average scores. Uh, and then you look at the combined scores. You look at, uh, uh, the, the interview scores, the submittal score, the weighted score and the ranking. So first through six, we had to rank them. That's the only way, you know, we thought we could do it. Set up a rubric, grade them and rank them. This is the way they came out. And this is not meant to hurt anybody's feelings, but there have been enough questions and there's been enough, you know, Facebook chatter or, and, and a few emails, and I'll get to the emails, uh, that people want to, why? What, why is this happening? Well, it, we would, if, if Haddonfield Childcare had come in the top three in terms of what they're providing our students, the cost, the, uh, the, the expertise, then we, we could have absolutely said, look, they've been there. It's going to create less upset for parents. It's going to, you know, that, that value, that counts for something. But with these rankings, we said, boy, we really have to look at these top two candidates and really need to, to call for references and dig hard and see if there's something weak there. See if we're missing something or missing something. They look good on paper. They're saying the right things. Their proposals were excellent. Are we, are we, are we just blindly going with something that looks good or do we, or do we have to, we have to do some homework? So we did do some homework. We made the phone call. There's some misunderstanding. I'll get to some of the questions. There's some misunderstanding about the presentation last week. Uh, Dr. Musceline's responsibility was to call districts that had, uh, worked with Right at School. And Mr. Klaus's responsibility was to call districts that had been working with Alphabet. Uh, Dr. Musceline's report, you can go back and watch the video. I'm not sure of how it was misunderstood. But Dr. Musceline was simply reporting that the feedback on Right at School was not as strong as the feedback on Alphabet. So they called and without going into too much detail, they called for references, they compared notes, and both Mr. Klaus and Dr. Musceline agreed and reported back to the whole committee that Alphabet, in fact, did have the better, uh, uh, referral, they had better referrals. They had better, better, um, uh, feedback from people who are currently using their services. Uh, and people that are just transitioning to the services too. They had a nice transition phase. So there was no, on that committee, there was no dissension. The committee, uh, the committee agreed, uh, we, you know, unanimously that, that the best decision would be to go with Alphabet. So this was not a Mr. Klaus decision and not a, a, a Dr. Musceline decision. This wasn't a split decision. This was absolutely unanimous. They had different assignments to go out and find refer, uh, references for, uh, for their practices. Very, very important that that's clear because, you know, it has been misconstrued. Uh, so let's frame the re, reframe the question. What if we didn't have a childcare provider? And, and I know we do. I know we do. What if we didn't? And we did this open search and, and a, and a Haddonfield company, a local company, shop local company comes in and they say, we want to do the job. And this is how that we evaluated them as a committee. Do we give the responsibility, and it's a big responsibility, to our neighbors just because they're our neighbors? Or do we have to, are we, are we held to a higher standard because we can't just hand contracts to friends or contracts to neighbors? We have to, we have to think in what's the best interest of the child and the family. Uh, I, I would argue that, you know, we have to do what's best for the, for the child and the family, even though it would be disappointing to the neighbor who put in for the offer. It's not that easy. Uh, we had an existing relationship. Haddonfield Childcare has done, uh, uh, a good job in the past. Um, so, um, I, I just wanted to reframe the question like that. So the feedback, we received twelve. We might've gotten two emails right before the board meeting because I know there was a push on social media to send us emails to have us reconsider. And, uh, and about two-thirds of those were expressing disappointment. About one-third were asking questions about time of start, about ED, uh, uh, extended day kindergarten. I had four personal conversations personally with parents who I received an email from to save me the time from, uh, from, uh, writing an individual email to these person and, and explain the process, uh, just to get people to understand. Um, so there were, there were questions. So before we, I want to read all the questions. Before we get to the questions, we, I compiled the questions that we received via email and I also, uh, added some questions that were, that were evident from the Facebook chatter. I, 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 at this point, I mean, I have to make a comment about Facebook. Um, it's, it's not the most productive place to get your information. It, I, I hope everyone gets the opportunity to, uh, to be in an organization that's trying to serve, uh, 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 people, trying to serve, uh, uh, some good. And the, and the, and read about the, the misunderstandings or it, it, and it, the only thing I could say it's, it reeks of is whisper down the lane. You know, I remember you were a kid and you sat in the premiere of the rug and, and you're the first kid whispering to the next kid and by the time it got back to you, it was not at all what you said. There, there's misunderstandings and, and we're here and we want to communicate. So we're giving the information and so we try to through press releases and we try to give it as factually as possible. But, uh, in this culture, when the, you know, the people in charge tend to be, uh, seen as, as doing something bad, I, I guess it's, it's easy to get on Facebook and talk about like, oh, this is ridiculous. And, you know, they didn't take anybody's consider, any parent considerations. They absolutely did for our school, school leaders. But let's go through the questions. It's, it's four slides. It's meeting. Uh, why do this? You know, I'm, I'm going to reference some of my earlier comments. Uh, why, why are you doing this? Why are you even doing this in the first place? Isn't seeing what's available is a good thing. I, I touched on this. Why not select a local? It, it was a consideration, but not a prerequisite. If, if we made it a requirement, oh, and, and this is, this is very important too, geez. Shouldn't come to it this way. In the RFP, it said, we want to give our current Haddonfield Childcare, uh, employees with, uh, you know, they have to be licensed, you know, they have to maintain their, 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 their legal obligations to, to, to treat the kids. And if they receive good, uh, uh, references, uh, then, then they can, they can be the first hired by Alphabet. They, they, Alphabet will hire and, and any, any company that submitted the RFP, it was one of our prerequisites. We don't want to put our, the people out that are doing the work and that the kids know. And Alphabet said yes. And they said they would do it at comparable, at their comparable rate. So they want to make sure references. They want to make sure they're hiring the best of the people we have. I can't speak to, to, you know, each employee, but they want to, they want to bring in the, the employees that we want, uh, to be working with our children. Um, is this an answer looking for a problem? I, I kind of love that comment. I, I'm being a little bit facetious. That sounds to me like, don't we just want to look the other way? Do we not, do we not want to, uh, look out and, and try to, to improve? Or do we just want to look the other way? And to me, that, that smells of groupthink. And we, and, and we don't want to be an organization that just responds to, to, to acute problems. We want to be an organization that looks forward and finds better solutions for our children. Um, it's, it, there are many examples we've seen and actually that we've been correcting of, uh, waiting for a problem, to, to, to find a solution, but it, what that does is it leads to bigger problems. Why now in a pandemic? Well, life must go on. I mean, uh, we're talking about not, not replacing the staff. Uh, we're talking about a thorough onboarding process. Uh, we're fearful of anticipated budget cuts. Uh, and, and, uh, we, and another thing that's very important is we started the process well before the pandemic hit. Uh, the process was started in, uh, February, January really, when we started, December, January, when we started talking about the need for it. Um, we put a lot of administrative hours and our administrators are, are, uh, put time into this question. And it just because this hit that we say, okay, all that work we did, we should throw out. We should ignore the results because now, now everyone's afraid and it's a bad time to make a change. We didn't think that was a compelling, uh, reason. I love, I love using the word kickback. Uh, they're getting a kickback. This fifty-five thousand dollars is a kickback. Uh, this is a facilities fee and let's, let's, I'm going to say it as overtly as I can. We should not be ashamed of the, of, of receiving this fee. This is a teacher. This is security equipment, curriculum materials, technology needs, et cetera. This helps us operate in a time when we're worried about taxation becoming too, uh, too much of a burden on our, our, our taxpayers and we don't even know what the future holds. Having a stream of revenue like this is not something that we should be ashamed of. This is something we should be, uh, we should be proud of. The key is we did it without increasing the cost to parents because that was the feedback. Parents do not, and we said, parents do not want an increase in cost. So we're able to help with the burdens. We're able to keep the costs the same. And, uh, and, and we, we believe we're able to step up the offering. Uh, was it broken? It was not robust and unilaterally loved. There were meaningful criticisms, some of them being inconsistency between the buildings and oversight of staff. That's, that's what we received as feedback from people who use and the, and the, and, and the people who evaluate, uh, the, the system. Uh, what about an earlier start time? Very possible. Alphabet is amenable to it. If they have enough kids that, uh, that will, will sign up, they will absolutely provide earlier start times. Uh, why weren't the parents included? Well, the Board of Education does represent the parents and, uh, and through the administration. Our administrators are keenly aware of what the parents like and dislike about our programs, whether they be official school programs or before and after school, school programs. And something I've said previously is we don't govern by referendum. Every time we make a decision, we can't set out a questionnaire. And mostly it, it, because, well, it's just not how, it's not, it's not how it works. You, you ask us to look at things critically. We look at things critically. We look at things impartially and we try to make the best decisions going forward. Um, well, I, I, I mentioned this division with administration. That came out of left field. I, it was a misinterpretation of last week's, uh, last week's presentation. There was no division. Uh, they both had different roles and were reporting on each individual provider. Uh, what about unfettered free and playtime? I don't need my kid to know Mandarin or cricket and, and I, and I'm not, I'm, I'm not trying to, to make fun of the question because I, listen, our kids are, especially as they get older, it, it is more and more stressful. We, we, and one of our main goals is to talk about social emotional learning. We do not want these kids to leave the day of school and be put into a pressure cooker. You got to remember, this is your program. You are the consumer. The company serves you as patrons. Uh, you, 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 if you don't want your child to be learning Mandarin, they don't need to learn Mandarin. Uh, on the flip side, do we want to eliminate options and opportunities? Uh, and, and if, if a child goes into a room and, and gravitates towards a robotics game where they're learning some programming and they enjoy it, do we want to take that away and say, no, we don't want, we don't want you to, to spend too much time thinking or, 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 or learning? And I, I, I'm not trying to be, uh, I'm not trying to be, you know, funny with the, with the comment. But if the option's available, I, I, I don't think, I don't think it's a bad thing that if a kid wants to, it, it takes, shows an interest in something, uh, that, that, that they, uh, can dive into it. Uh, we, we, we mentioned the employees, um, oh, I, I, something about Alphabet. Uh, they, they have a curriculum. They have a training and a planning department. The, the curriculum doesn't mean that they're going to jam. They're not going to shove the curriculum on your child. It means that they're, they think about the time that the child spends there. They think and plan about the strategy and the process to have the kid happy, engaged, maybe, maybe kicking a ball around, maybe taking a nap, maybe help with homework. This is what we heard from them and this is what made them attractive. And the fact that they have a, a, a strategy and a, uh, system to think about this was impressive. And I don't think it's a bad thing. And what about the employees, uh, like I said, with, with recommendation licensing, they have the options to work there. Uh, staff, staff-student ratio of ten to one versus fifteen to one. Now, I, I feel like thi, this was, I don't, I don't know how to describe it. Our Haddonfield School District classroom policy for first and third grade is twenty-five to one. For fourth and fifth grade is twenty-seven to one. And in the classroom, it is structured. They do need to hit standards. We have expectations that must be met and we do it with those ratios. Uh, ten to one, fifteen to one, uh, I, I, I don't, I, we're talking about aftercare. We're not talking about hitting standards. So I, I find it odd that we have a real, a strong feedback about that ratio when our actual school building, the, the school day has much, much higher ratios. Um, and Alphabet did not include high school students. Uh, where, where, uh, Haddonfield Childcare has high school students, Alphabet does not, does not include that in their number. Uh, and, and Alphabet has this, uh, robust training program to make more use of the people they, they have. Uh, what about EDKP? So, uh, Haddonfield Childcare came out and said they will only do EDKP for another year. Um, it's important for the public to understand there are other EDKP providers. We are aware that the other providers do not provide busing. We've already been in communications with the other providers. They, the people, the, the parents who, who, you know, there, there is a long time to work out, uh, solutions to that problem. Um, they, they're, the, the prospect of full day kindergarten has come up. Uh, we do, we just simply don't have room for full day kindergarten. Um, if the state mandates it, we have to make room and it's going to be expensive and, and, and difficult. We do not have the classrooms to put, uh, full day kindergarten in the district right now. It's ju, it's just as simple as that. There, it's just a space issue. Um, the question of profit versus nonprofit, either, either structure serves the user. Uh, and I, I, I almost feel like people are mistaking nonprofit for volunteer. Uh, people are compensated in a nonprofit. The people that watch the children are compensated. They're, uh, the, the director was compensated. Um, they, they had money in the bank. This is not, I, I, I find that, I find it confusing. No, no one returned the extra to the parents at the end of the year. It wasn't a mutual company. Um, it, it, it's, it's a nonprofit, but, but it earns, it earns, uh, uh, money for, for what it does. Um, and then at the end of the day, people are like, you know, isn't this scary? Yes. Yes, it's absolutely scary. Um, considering all the factors, though, we think it's still worth moving forward. Um, change is scary, but I'm not, I'm very confident that, uh, in a year, you know, people are going to look back and, boy, I was nervous, like many things that you take on that are new. I was nervous this was going to be an upheaval, but based on what has happened in other districts when they signed on, uh, it, it, you, you know, it's, uh, you, you know, we think the transition's going to be, uh, be just fine. And there's information that- And there's information that as soon as we, assuming we vote this through tonight and, as soon as we do that, Alphabet will begin their, their transition strategy. And I'll share a little bit of that with you right now and then, and then I'll move through the public comments section. Here's the, here's the transition plan. So they have to make sure they have all the New Jersey licensing requirements and we have discussed with them if we pass this at the end of April. Is the timeline from May to August okay? It absolutely is. They created this presentation based on when we asked them to create the presentation. They're going to recruit their staff, recruitment fair, internet ads, local ads, school recommendations. Obviously these, these staff that we talked about. They have to make sure that their staff meet the New Jersey staff requirements, that they are appropriate, that they're approved to watch our children. They're going to introduce themselves to our school and staff. They're going to start to advertise and, and let people know about where they are, who they are, communicate into individual parents. And they're going to have back to schools, open house nights. They know when they're new, they have to do extra to, to, so that the, the parents can learn about their programs, learn about who they are. And then obviously they'll, they'll train their staff over the summer, get set up physically with some, with their, with their equipment. And then they'll have open house events so that people can see it. So, you know, this is very much in line with our, with our, our goals. I mean, social emotional learning, providing for our families, a safe environment for our kids to learn and, and also be, be, you know, comfortable. But, but, but we recognize that, that change is scary. So that was a lot and I, I want to be, I just want to say this too. I want to let the board talk because I, I just wanted to get through this, but, and I said I a lot, the, the way it works, I'm going to go back to this committee. Your administrators and your parents and your board, this is, this is the committee that made, when Chuck says, I make the recommendation. Chuck saying the committee, I, a representative of the committee, including our district administration, our building administrators and the three board members are making the recommendation to the full board to move forward with this change. Now, the full board is presented with the data. Technically, you know, this is, this is the fourth time that the board's hearing it and I'm, I'm laboring it because the, the public has, has, has been asking. Now, the board gets to tonight, make the decision based on what they've heard from the public, based on what, what they're hearing from the presentation from the administrators. Do we go with our, the three board members administration recommendation? Or do we say no? We still don't want to change it. And, and we, we have that, that right to do that and, and as a board, as a board, the board has not yet voted and has not yet spoken. So that's a long, long, detailed explanation of where we are and, and how we got here. So I'm, at this point in, in the meeting, this is time where we open it up to, to public comments. Now, I'm going to take us back to a broader perspective. We have a lot going on. We have, we're hiring Mr. Klaus for a full three-year superintendent position. Wonderful thing that we should be very excited about. We're, we're passing our budget, our 2020, 21 budget, which is, is, is one of the most important things that we do. And we're making, we're making this change that I know people wanted to hear about. So at this time, John, our, our technology, our technology guru here, he's going to flip the, uh, image onto the screen and that image is going to give us, give you the ability to call in. So this is how it's going to work. When you call in, you state your name and you state what street you live on. We take calls from Haddonfield residents. We, you don't give, you don't have to give your street number, just name and the street that you live on. And then you, you, because of the, the way this online meeting works, we will take comments about anything. So both agenda items and non-agenda items. When you call in, and Chuck will flash it on the screen, when you call in, what she's doing now, you dial that number, you type in the PIN, you're going to go into a queue because if there's more, you know, that, John will, Mr. Miller, John Miller will, will queue up calls. So you may have to wait for the next person to, to finish. When you are ultimately on air, it's like call, it's like talk radio, you have to turn your volume down because if you leave your volume up, we're going to get all kinds of feedback. So make sure you turn your volume down. We're going to take the calls one at a time for comments. I'm going to take notes. I'm going to ask you to say your name and your street and then we'll take, and then we'll take notes. So John is going, has done that. There's about 30 second delay, so it could be very disorienting if you have your YouTube on in the background. Is that 609 number, John, someone that just dialed in?
Yep, that's somebody that dialed in. They have themselves, they can unmute themselves with star six.
Okay. So unmute yourself with star six. If, and I see that you did that. Okay.
There's a 30 second delay, so it's very disorienting if you have your YouTube on.
I hope you can hear me.
We can. Can you turn your YouTube down?
Yes, they can unmute themselves with star six.
So we can, we can hear the broadcast in the background that's about 30 seconds delayed?
Hello, are you talking to me?
Yes, yes, I am. You have to turn, John, can you, John, can you mute the callers in? Yeah, I see you doing that. Okay, so.
Then how can I hear the person?
You, you and I on the phone are going to be talking live. Turn the, turn the YouTube, turn YouTube off. You and I were going to be talking.
Okay, I turned it all the way down.
Excellent. Now, now you're broadcasting YouTube, but you, you can watch that later. You, you, we'll talk, you're talking right now to the board and the administration through, through me, this is Adam. And, and, and we're also broadcasting, but you're not going to, you're not going to see that till you come, go back and watch it. So, so go ahead, tell me who you are.
My name is Julie Vick. I live at 300 Center Street. Hi, can I go ahead?
Yes, yes, you're here.
Oh, okay, thank you. I have three adult children who attended the Haddonfield Public Schools from kindergarten through high school and I'm grateful for the wonderful education they received here from 1986 to 2008. And I have been on this meeting since you started. I'm very impressed by what I'm hearing tonight and especially everything you're doing and everything the district is doing through this, um, these difficult times. I'm one of the co-founders and original board members of Haddonfield Child Care, the nonprofit organization that has provided before and after school care as well as the extended day kindergarten program in the Haddonfield School Years, Schools for 35 years. And I will say, I was stunned to hear that Haddonfield Child Care, a steady and reliable partner to the district, has been dropped in favor of a for-profit company, Alphabet Education. For 35 years, Haddonfield Child Care has provided students with a safe, comfortable place to do their homework, participate in structured, semi-structured and free play activities, relax and develop relationships with other students and staff. When Alphabet offers, when Alphabet, I'm sorry, when Alphabet offers, what Alphabet offers sounds very academic and their marketing materials are undoubtedly designed to get parents who are hyper competitive to sign up their kids even if they don't need before and after school childcare. In my opinion, it seems that the already high achieving children in Haddonfield need some time for downtime and activities that are not academic. In addition, I know you had just stressed this, this, the ratio, but I still think it's Haddonfield Child Care is, is much better. And I also wonder if they say they will pay current Haddonfield, will hire current Haddonfield Child Care staff, will they pay them as well as they are currently paid? Because of the pandemic, it's understandable that none of the administrators were able to visit Alphabet for other programs that were in consideration or to talk with parents who use Alphabet, although they did speak by phone to administrators that have Alphabet at their schools. It seems to me that fuller learning and evaluation is needed to terminate a 35-year relationship. It's my recommendation that this decision and vote should be tabled till next year when hopefully the pandemic will be over and perhaps get feedback from current parent users of Haddonfield Child Care and Alphabet programs. Finally, I'm truly saddened that the Haddonfield Board of Education is turning over the work of caring for Haddonfield children during non-school hours to a for-profit organization and that a company will be making money on the backs of Haddonfield Public School students and their families. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Julia, it's good to hear from you. Okay. John, can you, can you drop that call and unmute the next? I think I see that you did that. Okay, I think we're with a new caller. If you can hear me, just give me your name and, and street. I think this is a good thing that people are.
You're a 917 number? We don't have names.
Yeah, yeah, there's, oh, sorry. Can you see the number up there? Oh, yeah, 917, ending in 36.
That's me, Adam. Justin.
Oh, good, yeah. You got anything to say, Justin? I'm kidding, I'm sorry. I, it just, I don't know how, jump up to the top of my screen.
There's a 609 ending in 37.
Okay, 609 ending in 37, you're up. Sorry about that.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Kay Flannery. I live on Windsor Avenue in Haddonfield. Um, I, I wanted to thank you guys. I, I do agree, this was an incredibly informative session today. And in the middle of this ridiculous pandemic, I just cannot imagine the level of work that you guys have all done. And it really, you guys shared a lot of great, exciting information, particularly in regards to Mr. Klaus coming onboard. So I was really excited to be able to take part today. I just have one question and perhaps a comment, and I don't know if we would have an answer to this question, but I wanted to know if we had any ideas as to how much of the next year's budget will be dedicated towards particularly security measures without counting for those that we are hoping to cover by the grants that we're applying for?
Okay, so I want to understand your question. You want to know, and I don't know if, if Mike can get that to you. So Kay, thank you. Kay's on our, just so the board, the board remembers Kay, had spoken at different meetings. We invited Kay on to our security platform, I'm sorry, our secu- security committee to have conversations so that she could be included in, in conversations about security. So one of the, the way, one of the things we're doing is we've made these, we've made these commitments to increase our security spending and our security measures. And we're, we're very much hoping that we can, we can get grants for those security measures. So the way, the way these grants work is you have to, you have to apply for them and, but we're committed to doing them whether we get the, the grant or not. We're definitely hoping for the grant. But Mike, can you, can you shed a little light on, I just?
I don't, I don't have a percentage, but, but I can definitely share that with you and follow up with you.
Yeah. Kay, we're, and we'll, we'll definitely know that number in that, and we'll be, we'll let the public know what the number is. But we, we'll, we've been talking about that in the security committee in terms of how much we're spending. So I'm sure you'll, you'll, you'll get that in that committee as well.
But can I ask a question to kind of just understand where she's coming from? As in terms of grants, are we holding projects in light of getting grants? Or are we treating the grants as a reimbursement mechanism for projects that we're going to do anyway?
So the.
The latter, I'm sorry.
The, the, there's a name for it, the securing, securing our kids' future access to a grant, that is not holding up anything.
So we'll treat that as a reimbursement mechanism in the current budget, in the 21, 2021 budget year? If they come in, if it comes in.
The grants are not retroactive, only for this law. So for security, you, you can't spend the money and then apply for the grant. Has to be the other order.
Thank you, Susan.
And Dave, if I can jump in. For clarification, Sandy Horowitz has completed a different grant that's asking for close to half a million dollars for other security measures, not currently on, on this list. So if, if she's successful with her grant, we'll have 3M, 3M sealants on the windows and, and, and advanced lockdown system, those other things. So there are multiple grants actually going on right now. The security measures moving forward are, are not contingent on those though. We still have, our plan moving forward is not waiting for that grant. That makes sense.
Thanks, Chuck. Yes.
Great.
That sounds amazing. Thank, thank you for that information and Mike, I'm sure, you know, you'll, you'll get us the additional data if they are available. The reason that I ask is I'm just so thrilled that we are continuing to make progress and change, you know, through the work of the security committee and obviously through the board, particularly with Mr. Klaus coming onboard. And my concern personally is in regards to this pandemic and the multitude of issues that obviously are happening because of the pandemic. What we don't want from the parents' perspective, obviously, and me personally, is sometimes, you know, things get reshuffled and reprioritized to the point where we no longer think that the security needs to take precedence in our town. And so I just wanted to take this opportunity to impress upon you guys that we are obviously, you know, hoping that this continues to be our priority agenda item for all of us, you know, even with the pandemic happening because obviously the safety, safety of our children when they are able to go back to school is of utmost importance. So that's really what I wanted to bring up today.
Thank you, Kay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Flannery. All right, good. We have a 609 phone number ending in 62, 609 ending in 62. Are they here? Or John, are you, do you have to push them in? All right, we'll, we'll, we'll start with 856 ending in 12. I'm sorry, 856 ending in 12. You are, you, if you, I think you hit star six. You're muted now. There you go. You're unmuted.
Thank you. My name is Scott Ward. I am at Bradshaw Avenue. First off, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Klaus on his new position. He started at high school when I was starting at the high school. So glad to hear a good name, or old name coming back around.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Secondly, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Haddonfield Child Care. My mom was one of the founding members as well. And I started there 35 years ago. And I still have friends that I keep in touch with and see almost every day from that program. And my son Cooper started three years ago, two years ago, as one of the first legacy members of Haddonfield Child Care. My daughter is there now or was there this year. Both my kids had a great time there and I just want to express my gratitude to everyone involved in that whole program and all 35 years of hard work.
Thank you, Scott. Express our thanks to your mom too.
Thank you.
I'm getting texts from John letting me know who, who is in. 917 ending in 36. Someone on the board just texted me, bingo. Not, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's Justin.
Justin, yeah. That, forgive me.
Adam, I'm going to have to change my number.
I hear you. Listen, my little bird in my ear just said 917 and I repeated it and I was like, wait, no, oh, God. That's terrible. All right, we're done with the public comment. This bird in my ear says, sorry, Justin. I'm, I'm teasing everybody. Okay, there's no more callers in the queue. Thank you. Give it another 10, 20 seconds, John, if it's all right. I just want to make sure we're not missing something. All right. I feel safety when John has that. I don't know if you guys know, but when John puts the slide up for people to call in, we are no longer on the screen and I like that. But I'm going to tell you, John, we're ready to pull it back down and finish this meeting. But I'm gonna tell you, John, we're ready to pull it back down and finish this meeting. Uh, so let's get back to, uh, okay, we'll get back to the meeting. So, next up on our agenda is to, you know, to go through the approvals. So, um, without further ado, we will read through, uh, item ten, governance. We're gonna approve the plan for instructional continuity in response to the COVID school closure. We're approving the two job descriptions for account manager and for educational technology device assistant. Uh, as, uh, Mrs. Hoag wrote in our, uh, in the, or gave us a policy update, we have thirteen policies being approved for their second readings. Um, can I get a motion?
Motion. Linda.
Who was it? Oh, yeah, say your name. All right, Linda and second and say name.
Second time.
All right. Uh, the, uh, any discussion? Any discussion?
Yeah, we need to, um, table
Oh, yes, yes, that's right, so we have to, yes, we have table, uh, eight, uh, which, uh, number eight, which is policy seven two four three. So, motion to table seven two four three.
So move, David.
Second.
Lynn.
Lynn.
Uh, you, no, you don't have to read through the vote, all, you can get, uh, Mike, give us an all in favor.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Any against? Okay, policy seven two four three is tabled, we are in, uh, we are in our motion to approve, um, the remaining, uh, A, or I'm sorry, the remaining governance, A, B, A, B and C. Any other discussion? Okay. Um, can you call the roll, Mike?
Ms. Hoag.
Yes.
Ms. Hoagardle.
Yes.
Mr. Benford.
Yes.
Vice President Sidell.
Yes.
Mr. Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Crockett.
Yes.
Ms. Cutner.
Yes.
President Sangello.
Yes. Okay, we will move to, uh, number, uh, section eleven, curriculum and special education. Um, we are resolving to approve the rate for an independent educational evaluation, uh, uh, for the rates of an independent evaluation. Uh, Gino gave us an update on this per policy twenty four sixty eight. Uh, resolution to approve, uh, psychological evaluation rates, approve to abolish point six full-time equivalent school social worker, uh, approval to contract with the Seesaw Learning Management System, uh, approve Jan Zubak to provide learning evaluations, uh, provide Barbara Williams and Dory Levy to provide independent psychological learning evaluations. Resolve to approve Rowan, uh, Center for Assessment and Learning for the use of independent evaluations. Uh, resolve for, uh, two specific students to receive curriculum rate, um, instruction. Can we get a motion on eleven?
Motion, it's Lynn.
I'll give a second, David.
Great, any discussion? Okay, not hearing any, uh, Mike, can you call the roll?
Ms. Hoagardle.
Yes, but abstain on eleven C.
Benford.
Yes.
Vice President Sidell.
Yes, but I have to abstain on eleven C as well.
Mr. Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Crockett.
Yes.
Ms. Cutner.
Yes.
Ms. Hoag.
Yes.
President Sangello.
Yes. Okay, moving to section twelve, personnel approval of the new personnel transfer seller upgrades, mentoring, extracurricular, professional performance, leaves of absence and resignations. Uh, you know, we, we talked about this in the work session, but, uh, uh, we like to, uh, take a moment to honor our retirees who've given a, a very long, uh, who have very long tenures at Haddonfield. Lori Bushy is retiring in June, and she is a teacher over at Tatum and has just been, uh, a part of the fabric of Haddonfield for a long time. Chuck, I'll bother you to, uh, to chime in if you, if you'd like, but, uh, I've known, I've gotten to work very closely with Lori, was heavily involved in the HEA, and I got to work, had many very nice meetings with her personally when we, when we go over contractual issues. Uh, so, uh, we're gonna miss you, Lori.
Yeah, I, I'd be, it'd be hard to encapsulate Lori and her impact on, on Tatum and Haddonfield School there for the last, uh, two decades plus, right? Um, wonderful teacher, full of passion. Um, you know, I, I actually was observing her class earlier this year, uh, and just, it was a wonderful thing, still to see. And, uh, she's gonna be dearly missed, not just as a teacher, but as the person she is and, and what she meant to the kids and her, her peers in, in Haddonfield community.
Yeah, her children were like, her students were like her children, fierce, in a good way. Fierce, fierce advocate and lover of her children. Uh, she was one to tangle too. She, she wasn't afraid to get up in it when we were talking about contractual stuff with the union. Tough, tough and loving woman, we're gonna miss you, Lori. I was, I just did the play, playback, or she'll giggle at that. We, we had, uh, we had good, good, uh, fun, loving battles. Um, that she always won. I'm totally kidding, okay, sorry. Uh, any other discussion on, uh, person, I'm sorry, I, I haven't even read through it. Reemployment of nonrepresented, uh, certificate staff, approval of the athletic and non-athletic stipend, approval, uh, to submit to the Camden County Superintendent's three-year contract for, uh, Charles Klaus Superintendent, and the approval to advertise for Assistant Superintendent internally. Uh, any discuss, all right, can we get a motion?
Motion, Linda.
Do you get a second?
Second, Jamie.
Second, Jamie, okay. Any discussion?
Um, I just have a question on, on D, Chuck's contract, only that it says that it was, um, signed, approved at the May, at a May twenty twenty meeting, is today's meeting? Do we visit it again after the county superintendent approves it, or?
Yeah, it has to be, so, what you're, you're approving tonight is approving to submit to the county superintendent once after they approve it. Then you'll come back and officially finalize and approve it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, Chuck, um, Michael, take, uh, take the roll, please.
Ms. Hoagardle.
Yes.
Mr. Benford.
Yes.
Vice President Sidell.
Yes.
Mr. Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Crockett.
Yes.
Ms. Cutner.
Yes.
Ms. Hoag.
Yes.
President Sangello.
Yes. Okay, number thirteen, approval of following business and finance recommendations. We are going to, uh, this evening will be adopting the two thousand twenty twenty one budget. We are approving, uh, transfer, uh, from the year two thousand nineteen twenty, anticipated surplus to capital reserve. Appointing, uh, Dr. Brian Falkowski as a qualified purchasing, purchasing agent for the twenty twenty one season. Approval of School Business Office LLC to provide school business services effective, uh, July twenty through, uh, July, uh, two thousand twenty through June of two thousand twenty one. Uh, approving a contract with Critical Response Group for digital floor mapping. Approving a contract for RFP solutions for Cameron Equipment, uh, to install into the district. Approval for Alphabet to be the district's childcare provider for the two thousand twenty twenty one school year. Approval for, to participate in the inter-local purchasing system, uh, TIPS, which is a national cooperative purchasing program. Approval of the settlement agreement regarding a specific student, payment of bills, budget transfers, board secretary's report and cash summary report. Can I get a motion?
Motion, Tom.
I'll move that, David.
Okay, discussion.
I would like to make a comment on, um, I, I just want to congratulate Dr. Perillo for the hard work uh, and long, drawn-out work, uh, in bringing, uh, a settlement agreement before the board for, for vote. So, uh, thank you, Dr. Perillo.
All right, uh, thanks. David, any other, uh, any other comments? Questions, discussion?
I only wanted to also comment that E and F, we discussed last week, but they are very specific security improvements, uh, that the district is funding out of this year's budget.
Excellent. Okay, Michael, take the roll.
Benford.
Yes.
Vice President Sidell.
Yes, you caught me chewing ice, sorry.
Mr. Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Crockett.
Yes.
Ms. Cutner.
Yes.
Ms. Hoag.
Yes.
Ms. Hoagardle.
Yes.
President Sangello.
Yes. Uh, you know what they say about guys chewing ice? Number fourteen, approval of the following minutes, regular meeting minutes, March twelfth, regular meeting minutes, March twenty sixth, and executive session meeting minutes for March twenty sixth. Uh, can we get a motion?
I would, but you know what they say about guys that chew ice?
Don't move, Jamie.
Second.
Okay, Michael, call the roll.
Vice President Sidell.
Yes.
Mr. Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Crockett.
Yes.
Ms. Cutner.
Yes.
Ms. Hoag.
Yes.
Ms. Hoagardle.
Yes.
Mr. Benford.
Yes.
President Sangello.
Yes. Okay, board, is there any, are there any items for future, oh, let me jump in, any items for future consideration?
I just, I think we discussed at the working session, but to, uh, perhaps go over what the plans are for the end of year, uh, as we know them by the next meeting.
Hopefully, we have some more in, in, insight. Oh, yeah, I, I hear you. Uh, Tom, did you have something?
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna, um, ask was whether or not, you know, obviously, our teachers are really, uh, hitting the ball out of the park with, with everything, and I just want to make sure that we are, while keeping our eye on the ball, that we're capturing some of the silver linings of this, so that, uh, you know, when we get back to a more regular, uh, environment, we, we capture some lessons learned about what we can do well, when it's a normal environment, but we want to integrate some level of blended learning or remote learning, um, you know, along the lines of discussions that we've had with, uh, with Larry over the last two years. So, um, I'm sure there's plenty of, uh, time for that when we get out of crisis mode, but I just didn't want, you know, it to fall off the, uh, the radar that we're capturing this somehow.
Yeah.
And just to, to piggyback on, on what Tom just said, um, I, you guys have heard me say this already. I do think that it's, yes, next, next meeting, we need to talk about what happens at the end of the year, but we most certainly need to be talking about and what happens in the fall, because there's not gonna be much time. Um, and, you know, maybe everything is, is wonderful in the fall, but I think that what, what Tom just talked about is probably gonna be a bit of how we're going to be able to, to meet those mandates, that we don't know what they are yet, but certainly need to start preparing for them. I agree, and to piggyback on what Linda said, I think you said at the last meeting, um, ensuring that our bathrooms are, because we do have some issues with some of the bathrooms and facilities, and making sure that there is going to be proper soap dispensers and any changes that we might need in this new world that we're returning to, that, that's all set for when we do return and that we, that we're planned for that.
Yeah, so, so just a quick follow-up, and I'll follow up more with, uh, Kimmy as we go through. Um, one, we, we were putting together the summer retreat schedule for the administration, we're dedicating a good chunk of time to lessons learned during our distance learning. Um, things that we learned about what we can do, what we can't do, what students like and dislike, all of those things. As far as return, we've already met with the nurses and principals once, to, and, and Dr. Natikia, to start laying out what needs we have and what we're anticipating. Uh, we're gonna be meeting frequently with them. Um, and if we were to come back this year, we would have a full-blown, I guess, call it an emergency meeting, probably. Uh, but Tim McFerrin in maintenance has already gone through the entire, all the buildings to evaluate where we stand as far as the bathrooms, soap dispensers, places we put hand sanitizing stations. Um, so we're, we're jumping on that now, um, because we know we want to get our orders in yesterday. I mean, we already have an order in for a whole bunch of stuff, uh, because supply and demand is simply gonna be very, very difficult. Uh, but I'll be happy to give a complete update on all that status for the end-of-year celebration things and all of these stuff, um, as well.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot. It'll be good to hear what's going on. Um, it's, it's, there's so much that goes on at the end of the year in the normal, in the normal time. It's, and it's great stuff, but it's just gonna be different, so.
Well, and then, and then just to follow up in firm, in terms of what did we know in the macro, and what did we do well, and what can we change? I'm also concerned about the micro. Did the children learn and what is our plan for remedial for those that really didn't, you know? And I'm most concerned about level, grades one, two and three, where, you know, if, you know, the studies say if you're not reading by then, you're not reading. So, uh, you know, in, in, just to, you know, just to, in a future meeting, just find out the micro as well. And, and I'm not asking for next meeting, but just put it on, put it on the discussion table to bring a report to us, uh, on, on the plan of remedial learning for, for those where it, it, this emergency instruction just wasn't sinking in.
Yeah, there's been, it has been in, in our curriculum, yeah, as you, you know, David, it's, uh, curriculum committee, they, that we've been talking about what the summer plans are. It's, 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 you know, it's a lot. All right, I, I, it's making, it's reminding me, and I don't wanna drag this meeting on, go like, well, I have you all. It's my, uh, now I have you hostage, because you can't get off until we close the meeting. We interviewed Larry, and he comes in and he's energetic. Two by four by eight, you know, you don't have two covers to a book, you know, four walls to a classroom, you know, you don't have eight periods to a day. And, and we're like, what's he talking about? And he said, it doesn't have to be the old way, there's millions of ways you can teach these kids and you can be blah, blah, blah. And we were like, all right, Larry, that's awesome, you know? And then, two years later, we got, no one's in the building, everyone's on Zoom or, or Meet or Google Classroom. And, and Larry said at the beginning, he's like, this is gonna change education forever, like, it's like, it was, we thought Larry had rocket ships on him for how he used to think, like, oh, nothing has to be the same, we're gonna zoom ahead. And then the world grabbed Larry and threw him forward, and he's gone all the way down. But, uh, it, it's a remarkable time, and, and to boil it down, our administrators, our staff, the, the board, like, we're all, it, it's, it's a time to be proud of, of a lot of the work we're doing. Um, I know there are disappointments, I know there, it's not always going to be a party and a celebration, but people are working hard, they've changed lanes, they've changed highways, you know, totally different approach to the way we have to deliver. Um, understanding the need, the parents understanding the changes with frustration, with, with, you know, uh, they have to work too, and it's hard sitting there with your kid and, uh, but, uh, the stories are, uh, you know, we live in a very, very, we're very lucky to live here. I mean, the, the, we did not have to tackle some of those real difficult questions about, uh, internet, you know, for, for, for the, for the majority of our people did not have to, to have to handle some of those, uh, real difficult parts of the equation. But, um, but they've recognized it, people recognize, we, we do, we are lucky, we're fortunate, and they got to pivot and turn and try to make the best of it, being mindful of the fact that, that, that the times are uncharted and that they're lucky in many ways. So, it, on, e- every single person that's been a part of this, uh, in this, in this district, in my, our work as a board in this district, it's, it's Bravo, you know? I mean, the, the people, people have been doing a great job. So we, we start the meeting with that, I wanna end the meeting with that, because, uh, it's recognized, it's not perfect. Nobody's, you know, popping champagne, although we, we will be in a minute just to be done with the meeting, but, uh, it's not perfect, but, uh, but it's, uh, it's good, uh, But, uh, it's not perfect, but, uh, but it's, uh, it's good, uh, it's, 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 it's good work and we're grateful. Uh, the community's grateful. You can feel it. You can see it on, on a lot of the very positive things that happen, um, uh, organically in, in, in the community. So, um, on behalf of the board, on behalf of everybody that's been doing this work, like Bravo, thank you. And, uh, and, uh, you know, we'll see what, what happens. Hopefully things get back to normal quickly and we can move past this time. And, and, and like Tom said, learn from it. Uh, and, and like Dave said, make sure the, the people, make sure that we've taken care of everyone and that we can play catch up with people that need to, need catch up. So, um, all these things are wonderful and, uh, and thank you. Thank you, like, from, from, to everyone, uh, for, for doing the work. So, uh, with that, um, you know, anyone want to close the meeting? You can shut me up and I'll just talk to my computer like I do most nights. Motion to close?
I don't know, you're doing pretty good, Larry. Are you working on your Chuck yet?
Pretty good, yeah.
That was a hell of a Larry, let me tell you.
Listen, I pulled that out of the back pocket. I didn't know I had that in me. Although in the beginning, I was going to get a big, big Penn State ring and, and wear it. So you, where that thing, that ring, I remember, I remember thinking, I think I could do a Larry. Uh, but anyway, thank you. That's my, my dream job, doing, uh, stand, for impersonations of, of, uh, school administrators. Oh, and Bad Education, watch it. Bad Education on HBO, very good show if you haven't seen it. Excellent, speaking of, uh.
I'm watching this, maybe rethink my possibilities in this position.
Yeah, yeah. Amazing. All right, guys.
Thank you, Larry, and congratulations, Chuck.
Thank you, Tammy, for giving the shout out.
If Mike's notes, he can note the time that we're closing by looking behind him.
Yeah. By the way, um, you can't, you can't tell time on that clock anyway. Every time you've mentioned time, I'm like, yeah, I don't think it has hands. It's always on the, it's always on the, on the hour.
Mike, update the hours.
No, no, it has arms.
That's a big, that's a big clock.
Do I get?
Good night, all. Take good care of yourselves.
Good night, folks. All right, motion to close. We have to be official. Motion to close. Let's go.
Motion to close.
Yeah, who's? David, Tom. All right, now we can just hang out and BS, although we really can't because we, we will be above, we'll be, uh, beyond quorum. Thanks, folks. Good night.